Welcome to the July 7th, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting. Tonight, we will start off with Jamie Ome saying the invocation. Pastor Jamie is one of the pastors at Vineyard Church. Welcome.
Thank you Mayor Bark for the invitation to open this session in prayer tonight. Would you please join me by bowing your heads in prayer? Heavenly Father, I bless your name on behalf of our city leaders. I pray they will not grow weary of doing good, but in due season, Muscatine will reap a good harvest for the work which is being done in this place. Help each member to be strong in their decisions, and when they experience confusion or doubt, you provide your abundant wisdom. Help the council members to use the gifts with which you have endowed them for the good of our community now and looking toward our future. Through your Holy Spirit, bring peace and clarity into this room, and like Joshua, help these members be bold, have confidence, and humility as they both lead and serve Muscatine. Bring good judgment and business acumen to be profitable stewards of all we have been given. The prophet Micah wrote, "What does the Lord require of you? But to do justice, to love kindness, and to walk humbly with your God." There are no wiser words for the leadership of our city. We thank you for their oversight in all things regarding guarding and leading in Muscatine and all of its citizenry. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much. Cindy, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Osborne.
Present.
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 Thank you so much. Will you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone present that would like to address an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? All right, so we have two swearing-in of firefighter fighters. And the first one we are going to do is Joel Cologne. Have you approached the podium, please? I'm gonna have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joe Cologne.
I, Joe Cologne.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Iowa.
And the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of firefighter.
Discharge all duties of firefighter.
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
In the city of Muscatine, Iowa.
As now.
As now.
Or hereafter required by law.
Or hereafter required by law.
I'm going to have you sign right here for me. And what I'm gonna have you do is I'm gonna have you take a seat, or take a stand right over here, and then I'll have you go around and shake the hands, okay? All right. Next, we have Mike Fleming. I'm gonna have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mike Fleming.
I, Mike Fleming.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions.
That I will support the constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Iowa.
And the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
Partially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties.
Discharge all duties.
Of firefighter in the city of Muscatine.
Firefighter in the city of Muscatine.
Iowa.
Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Perfect. Congratulations. I'm gonna have you sign right here for me. And after this, I'll have you guys walk and shake hands with the council members. Good.
Welcome.
Good luck to you.
Congratulations.
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 Welcome to the team.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
And we're gonna move an item up. And this is an award for Lieutenant Jeff Yurak. I'm gonna have you approach the middle, please. All right. Tonight Lieutenant Yurak is getting a award, a life-saving award. And as I'm reading this, it's just absolutely amazing that we have this kind of hard-to-have force. We're really proud of him. So, on June 23rd, 2022, Lieutenant Jeff Yurak was dispatched to a medical emergency involving a female who was unresponsive and not breathing. Upon his arrival, Lieutenant Yurak observed that the victim's face was turning blue and she was not breathing. Lieutenant Yurak took over chest compressions, performed CPR for approximately two minutes until the Muscatine Fire Department arrived on scene. Once on scene, paramedics determined the female had regained the pulse. Lieutenant Yurak's quick actions and his performance of CPR on the victim is credit for saving this female's life. And I also learned that this is today's, your 30th year here in Muscatine and today working for this force, so thank you so much. And on top of that, the chief asked me to give you this as well as a token of appreciation and congratulations to you. Yes. Absolutely.
Way to go. Looks like you started when you were 12, though.
I'm sure you're my best friend because you're sitting in the front row. I'm sitting with you.
Yes, I saw that.
Couldn't be happier for you, Jeff.
I do too.
Thank you for all you do.
Nice job.
Well-deserved. They should always be here.
Is that his parents?
Yes.
Nice.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Oh, whole place is empty, huh?
I know.
Yep. We'll just hold tight until everybody leaves.
All right, the next item. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda which includes items 8A through C, items 8A through F, items 12A through H, and tonight's bills totaling $3,546,485.71?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon.
Second, Freilich.
And a second by councilmember Freilich. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. All right. Next item is public hearing. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is a public hearing regarding the approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, the cost estimates for the proposed 67th Avenue sidewalk improvement project. Now is the time for the public to comment. Have you approached the podium? Name, address, and we'll give you three minutes.
Richard Hovel, 1208 Lincoln Boulevard. I didn't have my hearing yet at the start. Is this for the 47th Street?
So I'll have you say your name and address in the, so everybody can hear at home, and it's for the 67th Avenue sidewalk.
Yeah, okay. Richard Hovel, 1208 Lincoln Boulevard. Now, I listened to it on YouTube at our last meeting, but I wasn't clear who pays for the sidewalk.
The city.
The city.
Yeah, the city pays for the sidewalk.
Oh, okay. I have no further questions.
Okay, that's it. Wow. Okay, happy customer.
That was simple. Thank you.
Well, most of those lots are 132 or 133 feet long.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment? All right. Here and none, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Brockard and a second by councilmember Freilich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is a public hearing regarding an application for community development block grant funds to support the Mulberry Neighborhood Revitalization Pilot Project. And we have Jody Royal-Goodwin to do a presentation. Welcome, Jody.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. It's not deja vu. We are back again. So we are back again because there was a IEDA likes very, wanted very specific language in the, wanted something very specific in the notice that was in the paper. So we did everything right when we got to you guys, but we had to notice it different. So here we are again. But... So, once again, we're gonna review a little bit of the CDBG requirements, go over what the community needs assessment is, and then quickly run through, well, we're gonna quickly run through those and spend a little more time on the proposed project this time than we did the last time, and then open it for public comment. So, community development block grants. The federal purpose of the community development block grant program is to develop viable communities by providing decent housing and suitable living environments and expanding economic opportunities. And to do that, they provide money to participating jurisdictions, which are cities of 50,000 people or more, and every state in the Union. So, all 50 states and thousands of participating jurisdictions. And then how that, the states sub-allocate their money to sub-receipients is what the city would be. However, all of those activities are required to further the consolidated plan that the jurisdiction receiving the money adopts every five years, and then all the federal laws and regulations that go along with that. So, laws and regulations. The basic ones for CDBG are you have to meet a national objective. There are three national objectives. One is low and moderate income resident benefit. The second one is insulin bite removal, and the third one is responding to an urgent need, which is primarily a declared disaster. The second requirement that's kind of related to that and specific to HUD programs is what they call Section 3, and that's to provide employment opportunities, meaningful employment opportunities to low and moderate income individuals in the family, or in the, in the community. There's a whole lot to that, and actually, they just redid all of the regulations, so we'll be giving a try. It actually applies to public housing agencies as well, so we're learning lots now. One of the other things that's federal, like if the city does something with a transportation grant or that kind of stuff this applies to, is the anti-displacement relocation, which is under the Uniform Real Estate and Something Act. The, I wrote it down, but I can't remember it right now. The, which says that you will not displace anybody that's not necessary to be displaced, and if you do, that you will compensate them justly. And that applies, an individual, in this case, is an individual or a business. So, if we tear down a house that's occupied, we have to put that family somewhere else that is acceptable and reasonable and make sure they are not financially harmed by that. It would be the same thing with a business. So, and you may remember, some of you, I think we actually did this quite a while ago at the beginning of the pandemic, we adopted a policy to apply for the CARES Act funds, which said, "We are not going to displace anybody," or does not our intent to displace anybody, and if we do, that we'll comply with the URA. One of the other regulations is called the Environmental Review Regulation, and so that's not the environmental that we talk about a lot at council because it, normally, we're talking about Phase 1 environmentals that are associated with specific projects, specifically street projects and those types of projects. In this case, it's about the broader environment that a project sits in. So, and it can be an exempt project, or it can go all the way to requiring some form of mitigation. For example, one of the things that a lot of people think of when they think of these types of projects is historical preservation, and not, when you use the CDBG money, not to have an impact on a historic building that may be in the neighborhood, or it may be the historic building, and so then what do you, what the rules that you have to comply with. Some other examples would be like if you did a project next to the tracks, you may have to do noise mitigation, those types of projects. And then financial management, you have to have a financial management system that is acceptable to the federal government before you can receive these funds. One of the regulations that IEDA puts in place for using the CDBG funds or applying for the CDBG funds is community needs assessment, which is what we talked quite a bit about the last time. And the community needs assessment has, requires, you have to hit three things. What are your community needs and housing, community development needs of low and moderate income persons? What are the other community housing, community development housing needs of the, of the community? And then, how are you going to address those? Are there planned projects to do so? And then you would identify specific needs within those categories. So you need 100 units of housing that's available to homeless individuals or individuals experiencing homelessness. And then, and how did you identify those needs? You have to explain all of that in a written report to, to the IEDA. And so for us, we did that. We reviewed a lot of reports that were completed in the past couple of years. We reviewed the census data. We took, reviewed the input that was, came out of community meetings related to the Grandview Avenue stuff, the heart and soul information, as well as a couple of focus groups that had happened related to other projects. So, and what we found, again, this is pretty much the exact same slide you saw the last time because it's nothing new. We need housing of all different types of people in the community. This was, again, reiterated with the citizen survey, that people want to feel safe. They want to have places that are attractive, that are welcoming to visitors as well as residents. And then some additional stuff was, you know, they want access to affordable healthcare. They, they need support for, we need to support additional basic needs and those types of activities. So, the project. Our proposed project that we are here for is the Mulberry Neighborhood Revitalization Pilot Project. And so, that project essentially is bounded by 5th Street to 10th Street. And then the primary part of it is between Mulberry and Spring Street. As you can see, it's kind of like you tried to draw a dragon on an Etch A Sketch, but... So that's the area we chose, and why did we choose that area? There are a lot, there's lots of reasons we chose that area. IEDA came to us and asked us to pick a neighborhood that was close to downtown that we could make a difference in improving the lives of the residents living there, a visual difference, because then it would be more welcoming. It would help with the economic development, but also make a difference, truly make a difference to the neighborhood. So, we looked at a couple different neighborhoods. We talked about this before. We looked at the Grandview neighborhood. We looked at this neighborhood because it is so close to downtown. I mean, it's kind of like the next step up, right? And so, and it has a lot of deterioration in it, and if, I mean, all of you are aware of this. It hasn't had a lot of investment in the past. These are true pictures from that neighborhood, and I wasn't trying to pick on anybody. They're just, they're both vacant buildings. The other thing is, is that it is a hotspot for the school population, so a huge number of the kids that attend Muscatine School District live in this neighborhood. Unfortunately, about 30% of those children actually live in poverty. The neighborhood is a qualified census tract, which means that it is, 51% or more occupied by low and moderate income individuals. It has a contra, in contrast to normal, normal neighborhoods across America, the homeownership rate is just 21% compared to, you know, the average of 67% nationally and quite honestly, within our communities. So 79% of those living in this neighborhood live in rental properties. We do have the deterioration. They had a number of abandoned buildings, abandoned properties. And this chart down here, you can't see it really great from here, but it's in the book. And I think you all have gotten a copy of the Pilot Project book before that says, just by a drive-by or a walk-by, I guess is what you all did, that it was what conditions you could see just from the outside that each property could lit, could use. So roofs, and so roofs, 51% of them will look like they could use some roofwork. 74% could use some siding or painting work, that kind of stuff. So, and even 37% had foundation issues. So it, it's an area that really can benefit from that as well. And so, what are we gonna do when we get there? We, so the project as a whole, when you look at this book, is much more in-depth than what we're gonna talk about on the next slide, which is the budget part of it that kind of identifies where CDBG is gonna be involved. We're gonna demol, continue demolishing vacant, deteriorated, and dangerous properties. We're gonna do facade improvements, both commercial and residential. We're gonna look, we're gonna do some housing work, both rehab and as well as some new construction. You're all aware that NCSA is gonna build a 15-unit complex in that area. So, and then there's some infrastructure plans, some street lighting improvements, some, we're gonna look at a living street, which is eh, kind of infrastructure. Some non-traditional infrastructure is, we're looking at Wi-Fi mesh network, as well as then some placemaking activities. So, improving the, increasing the number of street trees that are available, providing some places for people to gather safely. And so, these are, when you look at this screen, the only one that's not really something we anticipate touching is that top-left one, and that's just an example of what a living street might look like. So, oh, this one didn't work so well either. So, the budget, and you had this in your agenda item summary. And the reason it looks different from what you read in this book and what we talk about, the significance of the project, and there are gaps. So, IEDA said, "Give us your wish list." We gave them a wish list, and they said, "Okay, this is what we're gonna fund." And they weren't exactly in line with what we really wanted them to fund, but it'll work. So, we'll, so we've got, what we had is the cost estimate of the line items. They said, "These are the types of activities we'll fund, and then this is the amount we'll give you." As you can see, many of the more infrastructure, placemaking types of activities, they fully funded, and honestly, in commercial facade, they were like, "You under, you lowballed that, so we're gonna give you more." And then, the nuisance properties, they're actually gonna give us $100,000 in state money that is typically provided as a revolving loan. As long as we use it for housing on the back end, we will not be required to repay any of that money as well. So, they're gonna give us $1.8 million in, over a three-year period to do these activities. Then, they wanted to see what local skin was in the game. And so we didn't, we hadn't been, based on our discussions, we had not been planning to identify that upfront, though we did have local commitments to fund the projects. Part of the reason for that was because we need the flexibility to, to see what we can do without putting local money in, because as I said, there are a ton of, oh, I, because one of the regulations, I just remembered I meant to add, was prevailing wages. So, if we use the community development on a multi-unit project with CDBG funds, we have to now pay Davis Bacon wages, which I'm not against Davis Bacon wages. It's just a lot of extra work. It's different, you know, there are just differences. So, so we were looking at it in terms of this is what we have, and then let's look at each individual project and figure out what we can do using this money, and then we'll continue working with the local money because that's easier, less regulated money. They, they wanted us to show a 25% match in the end, so we have that illustrated here with resources that are already being used in that community. So I am not asking council, when you get to that part, to identify any new funds for that. These are funds that would be used for those purposes anyway, out of the demolition money that's being allocated, as well as then the ARPA money that was allocated to the neighborhood revitalization projects as well. And it leaves the money for Grandview alone as two. So, and then the county has allocated money to this project. The Community Foundation actually has allocated money to oversee the project. So, as many of you know, there's a lot going on around, and we don't all have extra time. So, they'll be hiring individuals between the Community Foundation and NCSA to actually do the project management from the construction to the actual oversight. The other piece of that is you'll see that CDB, that IEDA has allocated $50,000 to that, that line item, and that actually is because we're required, because of all those rules, to hire somebody to actually do the CDBG compliance administration. So, that again, is another good thing. But, and then NCSA, as they're buying houses and rehabbing them, they've got their own funds going into that. So we were hitting the requirements of the CDBG use, of the CDBG program, but not increasing anybody's local allocation. And we assume that there will be more money that goes into this over time anyway, but we, we, this is where we're starting. And with that said, now it's time to open it for public comment.
Any public comment? All right. Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
Here and none, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by councilmember Gordon.
Second, Lewis.
And a second by councilmember Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. All right. 11A is a third and final reading of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the June 2022 addition to the Consolidated Muscatine Urban Renewal Area pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance on third and final reading and to direct its publication as required by law?
So moved.
We have a motion by councilmember Hopkins.
Second, Gord.
And a second by councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with public? Is there any discussion with council? Here and none, councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockard?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Third and final reading of this ordinance is approved as submitted with all ayes. Next is 11B, resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract, and cost estimate for the 67th Avenue sidewalk project. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Brockard.
We have a motion by councilmember Brockard.
Second.
And a second by councilmember Hopkins. Is there any discussion by council? Here and none, councilmember Hopkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockard?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
And Freilich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next is 11C. It's a resolution approving the submission of a community development block grant application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority to support the Mulberry Neighborhood Revitalization Pilot Program. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
We have a motion by councilmember Freilich.
Second.
And a second by councilmember Gendrich. Is there any discussion? I, I guess I would just like to say, you know, the city, the county, Kent Corp, MCSA, and the Community Foundation, it's just good to see that partnership and everybody working together. We wouldn't be able to do this without everybody, for sure, so thank you to all. Councilmember Brockard, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
And Hopkins?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is 11D, resolution, resolution accepting completed work for the 2021-2022 Hot Mix Asphalt Overlay Project and release of retainage in the amount of $23,441.41. The city has completed the final inspection, and there are no remaining items on the punch list. The city has completed the final inspection, and there are no remaining items on the punch list. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. Is there any discussion by the public? Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none. Councilmember Louis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gindrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is 11E, is a resolution setting a public hearing for July 21st, 2022, for the proposed development agreement with Kent Corporation for the former McKee Button Factory Building renovation. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hopkins.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion by public? Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none. Councilmember Hopkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gindrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
And Freilich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is 11F, is a resolution setting a public hearing for the July 21st, 2022, on the plan, specifications, form of contract, and cost estimate for the proposed Transit Wash Bay Project. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gindrich.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Brockert. Is there any discussion with public? Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none. Councilmember Osborne, how do you vote?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
And Gindrich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is 11G, is a resolution accepting an easement for a public sanitary sewer lift station at 2405 Grandview Avenue. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hopkins.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Brockert. Is there any discussion by the public? Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none. Councilmember Hopkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gindrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
And Freilich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes, and we did pull item H from the agenda. Next item is 11I, is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Compass Minerals in the amount of $175,300 for the purchase of Road Salt. There is a $220,000 budget in the snow and ice budget for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Freilich.
We have a motion by Councilmember Freilich.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gindrich. Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is 11J, is a request to approve entering into a professional service agreement with Bolton Mink and Inc. for general engineering services on an as-needed basis. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item, 11K. Request to amend the professional services agreement with Bolton, Bolton and Mink, Inc. for the Grandview Avenue Reconstruction Project. This agreement will amend the cost of the agreement with an increase of $6,000 to provide design services for an ADA-compliant sidewalk. Funding is available in the Grandview Construction Budget. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert.
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is 11L, is a request to enter into a professional services agreement with RDG Planning and Design for the design of the proposed Riverfront Amphitheater. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hopkins and a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is a request to enter into a professional services agreement with IMEG Corp. in an amount of $12,400 for a survey for the proposed Riverfront Amphitheater Project. Funding for this prod, funding for the, this contract is available in funds allocated for the Riverfront Amphitheater Project. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is 11N, Resolution Approving the Internal Advance of Funds to Begin Design of the Riverfront Amphitheater. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gindrich. And a second by Councilmember Freilich. Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold up. Sorry. It's a resolution. This one's a, it's a little out of order this time. So if, you'll have to do a roll call vote on that. We don't, we don't normally do it that way, but the, we, we wanted you to adopt the other two items before we did the internal advance.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Councilmember Hopkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gindrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
Aye.
Louis?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
And Freilich?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Just got to get back down there now. All right. Next item is 11O, Request to Approve Authorization for a Letter to RL Fridley Theaters, Inc. and Fridley Properties LLC Confirming Incremental Property Tax Payments for the Proposed Multifamily Development on Lot 5. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Osborne.
And a second by Councilmember Osborne. Is there any discussion with council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is 11P, Request to Approve the Issuance of a Purchase Order in the Amount of $28,628 to Deary Brothers for a 2022 Tacoma, Toyota Tacoma Two-Wheel Drive Extended Cab Pickup for the Police Department. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon and a second by Councilmember Gindrich. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is 11Q, Request to Accept Downtown Housing Grant from the Iowa Economic Development Authority in the Amount of $200,000 to Support the Development of Two Downtown Housing Units. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Osborne.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osborne.
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is 11R, is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Ostrom Painting and Sand Blasting, Inc. in the Amount of $62,347.14 for the 2022 Paint Striping Contract. Funding for this is available in the Traffic Control Budget. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hopkins.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gindrich. Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is 11S, A Request to Approve the Issuance of a Purchase Order to Bushman Excavating in the Amount of $75,000 for the 2022 Pavement Crushing Contract. Funding for this service is available in the roadway maintenance budget. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Louis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Louis.
Second.
And we have a second by Councilmember Brockert. Is there any discussion with council? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next, Councilmember Louis, do you have anything you'd like to share tonight?
I just want to remind people that on July 17th is tire drop-off for that week, and the week after that is electronic drop-off. So just to make the community aware that those are coming up, because I have seen a couple tires at the roadside, and want to remind people that those can be disposed of properly. Thank you.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Councilmember Gordon?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Freilich?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilmember Brockert?
A couple of things, Your Honor. I was called on the evening of the Fourth by a citizen whose trees were catching fire due to sparks from the fireworks that her neighbors across the way were lighting off. And she called dispatch, and they told her, "Well, they're legal until midnight." So, or 10 o'clock, rather. And she felt like she was kind of fighting a battle all by herself. And I, I think it's time for us to review our fireworks ordinance and see if we can't tighten things up a little bit. And, you know, the overall thing is that people need to be more respectful of the property of others, especially where there are trees involved and they catch fire. And then she has enough trees in her yard that if they catch fire, her house has gone too. And then the second thing is that I lost a very dear friend and coworker last week due to a mowing accident.